We are now going to call to order City Council Resolution 21-0082, Operating Budget for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2022. I believe we have Melissa Bruin, Allison Perkins Cohen, Chief of Staff, and maybe the CFO, but Allison, I'm going to turn it over to you to kick things off.
Great, thank you so much, Councilman Costello. We're very happy to be here, and yes, I do have our Chief Financial Officer, Chris Doherty, here with us as well. And we're happy to be here to talk about the, our budget for FY22. We're, I think we have a presentation that's hopefully loading. So while that loads, I'll just say that we, you know, this has been a very unusual year, of course, for, for everyone, but for schools.
Allison, Allison, sorry to cut you off. Who's, who's loading the presentation? Who needs sharing privileges?
Oh, don't we usually submit it to you all?
Oh, oh, Mark has it, my apologies.
Yeah.
He's gonna load it? Okay, Chris, you're, I think you're gonna be responsible for loading the presentation. Allison, I'm interrupted, please continue.
No, that's okay. Okay, so while Chris does that, great. Then, so yeah, just to again, go back a little bit to say that we, this is quite an unusual year for, for school systems in terms of the disruption that we experienced for students in the past year in terms of, of the school environment. And then, of course, also, this is the year that there was the, that Kerwin passed, and then there's been the additional other funding bucket. So there's kind of a lot going on this year. I'm going to try to hit some of the high-level themes and of what we're doing, and then turn it over to Chris, who will go to more into the numbers. Just to remind kind of the City Council members about the processes, so we develop our budgets. Oh, sorry, go back one, Chris, I wasn't trying to go that fast ahead. Isn't there one prior to that?
No, that's the first slide.
Oh, okay, oh, this is the other one, okay. For, in terms of engaging, in terms of where we are in the process, so just to remind the council members, we first develop school budgets, that starts in January, February, when they get their per pupil allocations, and they engage their communities to develop their school budgets. We then, you know, bring our budget to the Board of Commissioners to get input there. And well before that, we do a lot of engagement with communities, so if you do want to go to the next slide, Chris, we start that process. We started that back in January to get engagement sessions with communities. We did surveys with communities to get their input on the budget. And then we take it to our school board, who just then passed it in May, and then we bring it to the City Council for, to, to inform the City Council about what's included in our budget. Again, we did these engagement sessions. We did get a lot of participation. I think one thing we've learned about online is that doing them online, we got a lot more participation, both in the, in the town halls, as well as in through the survey forms. So we got a lot of input, then, that was really helpful to have. Next slide. So we, through those, through that engagement, we heard about five key priorities that the community is interested in. And so those are, you know, making sure that we're keeping our schools safe, I would say, is a general theme. So you'll see that in the COVID testing and, and symptom screening that we've been doing in our schools. You'll see that in the, in the ventilation and air filtration and school cleanliness items. So there's been a lot that schools and school communities have had to do differently this year in order to deal, to make sure that schools are safe places, which they are. And we've seen that in the extensive testing that we've done, which I'll talk about in a little bit. Mental health supports is another thing that we know that this has been so disruptive for our students and, and the, and schools, we know, in this last year have learned, if we didn't know it already, the schools are a lot more, about a lot more than just academics. They're about connection, they're about relationships with other students, they're about relationships to adults, they're about enrichment activities. And, and that has been really hard on everybody to not have that. Though it's been harder to keep those connections with students. And so we know there's been some, there's been isolation of students and we, and that kind of mental health support that we're hearing from communities, we echo as well as a key support that we want to make sure we're providing. And then there's still an interest in, in having a virtual learning platform for, that's available. Well, virtual learning platforms for all students. And then in the fall, we will be open in all schools, five days a week for all students. And then we're still thinking about what a virtual option would look like. And that's been part of what we've engaged the community on through our restore, reimagine, reconnect, restore, reimagine work that we've been doing. Next slide. So the FY22 alignment with the blueprint strategies, these are the kind of, some of the highlights when, you know, again, we've had a disruption in resources, and we have these funds coming in, both over time, it's going to start coming in through Kerwin, and then we also have the various pots of Esser funds coming. And, you know, one thing we know that we need to hold true to is really making sure we're sticking to our key priorities and building on investments that we've made, building on lessons that we've learned, and building that, what the research says. So one, we've looked really carefully at how do we keep going with some of the key strategies. We already identified, if, many of you were with us back when, go back to FY18, that first year, when Dr. Santalisis was here, and we had the, had a $130 million budget gap that the city and the state helped us close with giving us $60 million a year over, over each of the first three years there. We then identified the blueprint, and we've stuck with that blueprint and, and had good results with it. And so that's still a part of our core values of what we're, you're going to see in the budget. So the part of that is the literacy work. So we have the secondary literacy improvement communities that we've had a lot of work with, helping schools and teachers developing their capacity to, to look at their, their outcomes and then improve and iterate to make sure we're meeting students' needs. Be More Me is a, is a wonderful initiative that I think many of the City Council members have partake, have participated in in various ways, shapes, and forms. There's actually a forum, a Be More Me forum tonight, showcased tonight. But it's a, it's a curriculum that connects students to the history of Baltimore. It has speaker series events, it has, it has opportunities for fellowships. We have a number of Be More Me fellows right now, working with us now on developing criteria for school naming. We've thought seriously about the naming of schools, and as we, through our 21st Century Buildings Program, it's a key part of what we do to bring school communities together. When, when one school is closing and one school, and going into another school, we try to really make that, like, an experience that is enriching for the community, including addressing critical pieces of school history like names. And so right now, we have fellows from the Be More Me community working with us to identify the criteria that we should consider when we look at school names. And we're going to remain our investment in our literacy coaches. In wholeness, we also have wholeness specialists in 38 schools that are a place, a safe place for students to go, to get support, to, to help identify, you know, we develop skills with students to identify when they need a minute to, to, with, with an adult who cares about them, to engage and address their needs, and then go back to class more constructively. And so that's been really effective, schools have rated that very highly, and we're going to keep that investment. Mental health services are another one that we're going to make sure we have enhanced mental health services available to students who need them when they return. And then also making sure that wholeness is not just about, about wellness or, or mental health or social, emotional learning. It's also about making sure that we're connecting with students in all the things that excite them about school and all their passions, and that we're providing them coursework worthy of them. So we're making sure that we're expanding our, our rigorous course offerings, like AP course offerings in our high schools. We're continuing to expand that. And, and then the tremendous work that Dr. Pfeiffer has done on expanding, aligning the CTE pathways with, with the job market in Baltimore and with, with careers that, that will pay students a living wage when they graduate. And then in leadership, we're expanding our opportunity culture work, which creates opportunities for multi-classroom leaders in our schools to develop our teaching, teaching skill and force, our workforce. And also principal pipeline development through our promising principals program, and we've had a lot of luck with that, as well as talent management and support for supervisors. So we've done a lot of work to support our, our central office supervisors and develop their skills and working with their schools. Next. So again, as I said, we've got these three different pots of Esser funds that makes this year a little bit unusual. So last, going back to September is when we got that first pot of almost $50 million for Esser funds that were really critical at that time to meet some of the health and safety needs that we had in our schools. So some of the signage that you need in a school to make sure that kids are keeping a safe distance, and to, and some of the translation supports that our schools needed, as well as, as many of you know, and the, and the City Council was pivotal in supporting this as well, is that we needed support for devices for students. And so, so there was, there was $3 million that the City Council provided, as well as these, some of these funds in Esser and funds in other parts of, other Esser grants, where we were making sure that all students had access to the device they needed to access their learning, as well as Wi-Fi or hotspots, which has been a really key part of our work. In the next pot of funds that we received, that, that will be available through September 30, 2023, we, we also, again, continue to make sure our focus on making sure our schools are safe. So we've invested in the COVID testing that's happening in our schools. We are currently one of the largest testing providers in the greater Baltimore area with the amount of testing we're doing. I actually haven't looked in the numbers in a week or two, but I think we're about, we're over, we would be over 80,000 elementary school staff and students who have been tested since we started that program. We do weekly symptomatic testing, and in the high schools, we're probably at 15,000 or more high school students who, and staff who've been tested. Both of those are PCR tests, both of those are, the responses come back very quickly, and they've both indicated that our schools are very safe places. So I think our positivity rate in elementary schools is about point zero, I mean, 0.3%. And at high schools, it's about 0.7 or 8%. It's actually probably lower than that, because that includes some of the early weeks of testing that were a little bit higher, as we were initially bringing people back, the rates were a little bit higher. And so I think the current rate is probably even below, below those rates that are very, very low. We also put supports in for, for key things like grant administration. We know, that sounds like an unsexy thing, but with all these resources coming in, there will be a lot of scrutiny on, on school districts, and we know we need to be able to do this right and make sure we have strong, sound administration of these resources. And then things like tutoring and summer, and summer school, which we've really expanded our summer offerings this year to make sure that we can help students, again, connect back with their school if they haven't been in person yet, and, and accelerate their learning. Next. So Esser III is the pot that we received most recently, and that's the pot that we're doing this work with our reconnect, restore, and reimagine work. Many of you have, we did an extensive amount of engagement around that this month, and many of you participated. We had, we had forums in each of the council districts, and so many of you participated in those. So thank you for City Council members who came out and participated in those. We really want to make sure we're hearing from communities about what they value in this moment. The priority areas that we have work groups working on, and that we vetted kind of initial ideas with the community in this last month are listed there on the right. Literacy, math, secondary innovation, wholeness, virtual learnings, a virtual learning school, staff well-being, and communications and engagement. The reason those three are highlighted in the green, because again, they're overlapped with those, those priorities we heard from the community when we developed the budget, the, when we did budget forums back in, in January. So we're keeping that thread throughout this presentation, so you kind of see where that interest is. And then there are other, these are just other key priorities that we want to highlight that are, again, many of them, as you see, are that highlighted in green, because we heard about them from the community, as things that they value. So again, health and safety of schools is a big priority, accessing student learnings, another big priority. So you see the, the continuation of supporting the qual, the air quality work that Dr. Washington and her team did to make sure that our schools have M13 fil, MRF-13 filters and air purifiers, as well as the COVID screening, testing that we're doing, and additional custodial support. I think this is a, as I'm preparing for a deposition tomorrow on the, on City Schools Bradford lawsuit against the state for adequate funding. I can, this is one of the, one of the highlight areas where, you know, I think in this pandemic, we really saw that with the difficult choices we've had to make over many, many years to make reductions at schools, one of the things that has been sacrificed was custodial support. The number of square feet that we were allowing, that we, we changed the guidance on in terms of how many square feet per custodian, a custodian had to cover, and we kept expanding it, because frankly, everybody, school principals, and we were prioritizing classroom investments, like classroom teachers or enrichment opportunities. And so in this pandemic, we really saw that's a challenge, when you need, when there was certainly the early belief about surfaces being problematic. And so we had to add custodians, custodial support, to make sure that people felt that the schools would be safe when they returned. And we've had resoundingly good feedback from teachers, from principals, from families, that that is, that we've been true to our word on that. But it was an investment we had to make, because unlike other districts, we had really cut that back severely. Wireless access, again, and devices is something that we've had to do. Our buildings don't have the, don't have the infrastructure to have wireless throughout the buildings, so we've been expanding that, and, and that's been a key part of the work, and then continuing to make sure we have the devices. The Equity Office expansion, just kudos to Dr. Durant, who leads our equity team, who's been very smart, very smart and strategic about the way we've unrolled, unveiled that work and rolled it out, really building the capacity of our leadership teams and our staff to be able to, to, to effectively implement an equity strategy. So we started with, with cabinet, with cabinet members, with board members, with principals, with principal supervisors, and high-level folks in the last year, giving them our, our initial orientation to the Equity Series. And then now, next week, it's gonna, next week, next year, it will reach the, the school level. So school equity action teams of folks who have been, received that initial training will now start developing equity plans at the school level. And then enrollment choice and transfer is just a priority area, as always, trying to make sure that we have equitable opportunities and, and a clear process that families can understand about how to make good choices for their students, and the young people can understand about how to make good choices for their, for their high school and middle school plans. And this point, I will turn it over to Chris to do the numbers.
Thank you very much. I can't really tell as I present, am I, am I off mute?
No, you're good.
Okay, good, thank you. With Ms. Perkins Cohen, given the, the kind of content and the initiatives that make up the budget, I'm happy to provide some of the numbers and the nuts and bolts that go along with it. Here is our total revenue allocation for FY22. Importantly, though, this is, this does not include the Esser fund that we're outlined. This is our general fund budget, which you see at about 1.182 billion, which represents a less than 1% increase from FY21. Our special grant funds of 155.9 million, which, those are, again, not Esser or ARP funds, but what might be considered the more typical recurring federal and state funds. The bulk of these special grant funds are the federal funds, known primarily by their titles, you know, Title I, Part A, IDEA, Part B, Title IV, and some state monies, and those come in at just under 156 million. And our third bucket of money is our enterprise funds. And the enterprise funds are what we use for our meal, meal service, our breakfast, lunch, snack, and dinner, we're very, very proud of. As, as I think the council members know, we're a community eligibility provision district, so we, we supply all of those meals to our students free of charge. And when we're in classes and in person, we, we serve in the neighborhood of 90,000 meals a day. So our enterprise fund allocation for FY22 was estimated at 55.6 million, and all of that totals the overall amount of 1.393 billion, which on a year-to-year basis is about less than one percentage point higher than FY22. As I think council members know, the revenues are driven by enrollment. The single biggest driver of, of the funding is student enrollment. And with a centrally flat student enrollment, that largely contributed to our essentially flat total numbers, although the state did enact a hold harmless provision in the state funding, which was much appreciated as well. Now, to break out the general fund bucket here of 1.182, are by far biggest, biggest component of our overall revenue allocation, we wanted to break it into the most meaningful buckets, which I think are well-known to the members. That is, the single biggest bucket within our general fund is the revenue we receive from the state, again, driven by enrollment. We are essentially flat from 857.3 million in FY21 to FY22. I did mention, and the members know, that there was a hold harmless provision. The, the fact that it has mathematically gone a tiny, down a tiny bit, although it's, it's really incremental, is just a function of some timing differences. And so the state, all-important state revenue has remained the same. Our second-largest contributor is, of course, the city itself, which is arrived at from the Maintenance of Effort calculation formula. And the FY21 contribution was a little over 287 million, and for FY22 will be just over 295 million. Those two categories account for over 96% of our general fund. But for the fullness of the record, we, we include the others for information. The federal revenue, not to be confused with the special grant funds, which are largely federal. Those are things like E-rate, E-rate revenues make up the bulk of that 5.4 million. Our other revenue category is a mishmash of different components, but it's mainly made up of interest we might get on certain short-term holdings, lease payments, and out-of-district tuition payments and the like. Second to last, or last element is our general fund, fund balance contribution. We went up from a $15.3 million contribution in FY21 to a $17.5 billion contribution in FY22. Although, for the record, we were higher in 20, so although we did go up from 21 to 22, we, we did decline from 21, in 21 from 20. All of those components added up to the less than 1% increase in our general fund revenue in 21 of 1.72 billion, and in 22, 1.182 billion. So those, again, all of the action is in the state and the city contribution, but we, we keep these presentations consistent from year to year for ease and comparison, hence this format. I think Mr. Senneme also talked about Kerwin, and also one of the council members did. It's certainly a very, very large portion of our out-year planning. These are estimates of what our projected additional funding by fiscal year will be. They're quite, they're quite significant, as we all know. The FY22, one, as Mr. Senneme did point out, that essentially Kerwin, because of the, because of the timing, will kick in in FY23. And that's, what we mean by FY22 is what we, what we are having underbridge to Kerwin and other, say, Kerwin-like programs, most notably Concentrations of Poverty Grant, the per pupil one, which comes in at about $22 million. But then the, the increases are quite significant from there. And we are working closely with MSD and others to get all the information we can as they roll out more specifics about the timing of, requirements of, reporting of, and ultimately, the funding about Kerwin. But without getting in it too much, I was reminded by comments that Bob Senneme made of how we are, like the city, very much trying to take full advantage of the one-time federal funds, the CARES, Esser, ARP, ARPA funds, at the same time, being very mindful of not creating any cliffs by accident, where, by funding things with the Esser money that are, that either are or will become recurring, and then having those monies go away, and also preparing for the significant influx of funding from Kerwin in what you might call the out-years. There will be overlap in '23 and '24 between the significant one-time federal funds and Kerwin, but after that, the federal funds will, will be gone. Other revenue sources at the highest level, and also to give the members a view of how we've compared in the last few years, our enterprise fund, the, the Food and Nutrition Services Fund, 55 million in FY20 adopted, and the FY21 adopted was 54.5 million, and the FY22 proposed is 55 million. The reason we put the asterisks there is the timing of the FY21 budget was such that we had put in our FY21 budget, and it was adopted at, at the historical level of 54, 55 million dollars in revenue from the enterprise fund. We did not see those revenue numbers by a long stretch because of COVID hitting in March 2020, but that didn't, that didn't change what the solidified number was in the adopted 21 budget. So we were, we're, we estimated that in FY22, where we are looking to get back to some semblance of normalcy, that the enterprise fund will rebound to what it has been historically. Again, it's, I mean, I think as the members know, we get reimbursed from USDA for all meals provided to our students, and about $3.50 per lunch, although it can vary. And we also get reimbursed for lunches and snack and supper at varying rates. And we are hoping and expecting that that will get back to pre-COVID levels next year or the near after. And fund balance, another revenue source for the general fund, we contributed 22 million in FY20, dipped down to 15.3, and then in our FY22, one, we came in at 17.5 million. Those make up all of our revenue, revenue sources. On a, on the allocation side, using the 1.182 billion that we've gotten to know in this brief overview, we always look at how much of that goes directly to schools, and how much of that, although it may be budgeted centrally, is, is allocated for schools, because that's, after all, what we want to maximize year in and year out. Of that 1.182 billion, $803 million of that are direct school allocations there. They are controlled by the principals and the schools, and used for the schools' needs. And of that, and then of the centrally budgeted allocation, 379 million of what is centrally budgeted goes directly, it goes out to the schools, and that's important. And it, this district is very decentralized, and a lot of the decision-making and a lot of the funding does devolve to the schools, and that's why, and that, we think that's the, the way it should. But that's why such a significant amount of monies, first, are decided at the school level, and secondly, even what is centrally budgeted goes to the schools. Now, this pie chart is what we use to confirm to ourselves year to year and keep track of, of our overall general fund budget, about how much goes to the schools or is allocated for them. And we are at the 83% to 84% of our total general fund fits that category. And the last slide on this gives a bit more color as to what we mean by that. The, the money that goes to the schools right out of the gate and is decided at the school level is self-explanatory enough. But the 379 million that's, goes to school supports is made up of a variety of things, but it just makes typically better sense to have it done centrally, whether it's speech and language pathology, just contracts that are done centrally, aides or nursing folks that are contracted centrally, those preventative, preventative maintenance contracts, trash removal. These are not things that a school would want to have separate 160 contracts with. So for things like that, transportation, heating and cooling, and those, and things like that, as decentralized as we are as a system, we take advantage of economies of scale and purchasing power and use of contracts and, and legal resources in order to do as much of that as we can for the school. And that's what gets us to the, at least 84% of the general fund is in direct support of the schools. And I think, I think that takes us, we also will be participating in a in a longer version of this presentation next week, I believe. But that concludes the end of our overview presentation for this meeting.
Thank you. Could you please take down the presentation, Chris?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to go through, we're just gonna go in the order you appear on my screen. Councilwoman Porter?
I don't have any questions, sir. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Councilman Dorsey?
I'm all good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Council Vice President Middleton?
I'm good. Thank you.
Councilman Schleifer?
Thank you.
Councilman Stokes?
No question.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCray?
No questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes, I have a question. Thank you for your presentation. I appreciate it, and thank you, Mr. Chair and Committee. I wa, I was curious about Maintenance of Effort. So, the state has said that its funding will be allocated, I guess, based on two years ago's enrollment? Is that right? And then, so how is the cities going to be done? I think a lot of my principals, you know, and I'm actually afraid that, like, the, the maintenance, the, the numbers to, to deal with enrollment were so low in 20 and 21, that that would jeopardize funding for some of the schools that had really low enrollment. I have one school in particular that's also going through construction, so a lot of folks are, you know, not sending their kids or even on virtual because they think, you know, it's, there's nothing happening over there. So, so is the city's allocation and other parts of your budget still going to match the Maintenance of Effort commitment that the state has? Is it gonna be the same?
So I'm not, so I'm gonna try to, and I'm 100% sure I understood the question. So if I don't get, if I don't get at what you're trying to ask, let me know.
Allison, Allison, hang, hang on one second. Councilwoman Ramos, summarize it in one sentence, please.
I'm not an educator or in this field, so I may doing, be doing it incorrectly, okay? So, just, I just want to make sure that the Maintenance of Effort for, in, in the enrollment numbers that we're using to allocate the budget is from 20, 19 and 20 and not 20 and 21?
Okay, so just to-
To each school, to allocate-
Just to some, right, just to summarize, we're talking about utilizing the MOE or calculating MOE based on the number of students from 2021 versus 19 to 20, correct? All right, take it away, Allison.
Okay, that might be a question better answered by Chris. In terms of the timeline, Chris, when the state, what, what's the enrollment year that they use to calculate the Maintenance of Effort? I believe it's the year prior, but... You are not, we can't hear you.
It is, it is, it is, it is the prior year. So the basis for the projections is, is the prior year, that's true. I think part of, part of what I heard-
Chris, Chris, hang on one second. Can you, can you state what the prior year is? Is it 1920 or is it 2021?
Or 20- 21 will be used to project for FY22.
Okay, so just to, just to confirm, we're using numbers from the 2020-2021 school year to project for fiscal year 22. Is that correct?
So it would be the year prior to this, I think, Chris, right? It would be the 20, because we, we don't have the final numbers yet. So wouldn't it be the, the 1920 school year that is, that the state does it on, Chris? Because that's the numbers they would have?
Yes, and we make projections based on those. And then after we make our projections, there is a lag effect, and then we, we correct the numbers, the actuals. And the, the rest of the point I was gonna make is, on a school level, we do try to smooth the bumps, because although we were held harmless by the state, specifically for the point of whether overall enrollment took an atypical dip because of the very atypical year we were having, that, that is, that was a good thing. What, what is also true is that if a particular school has an enrollment drop, our process is that we will make projections about what will, with, with the schools, driven by the schools, and how many students they think they will have, so they can plan for the next year. That, if there are enrollment drops at a particular school, that can be felt in a very real way at the school level. We try to smooth those, we try to smooth those bumps out, but it is a constant process of making projections about how many students we think we're going to have, and funding schools accordingly, and then seeing if those projections were high, low, or, or more or less accurate. But I can also write up a short overview of how MOE is calculated.
So, Chris, I just want to go back to the councilwoman's question directly. So, for the fiscal year 22 budget, we are reviewing or deliberating, or whatever you want to say, but the budget that's in front of us for discussion for fiscal 22?
We use, sorry.
Go ahead.
For the, for the fiscal year 22 budget, the, the year that we're just about to enter, we use numbers based on children who were in the seats on 9/30/2020.
But, so wait, there's two, I think there's two questions here, which is part of, Councilman Costello, is that there's the question of how we get funded from the state, and then there's the question about how we fund schools. And there's a, and I think that there's a little bit of a disconnect in that. So the state's funding, which is, so I, and I have to admit that I get confused on this too. So the state's funding is based, is that based on the actual enrollment, Chris, from 1920?
It's based on the numbers from 9/30/2020.
Okay, here's- 2020, the state's is as well. Okay.
Yeah.
And then that's what we use to, to create projections for the following year for FY22 for the schools, too.
Here's, here's what I, here's what I'd like, hang on guys, here's what I'd like to do. I'm gonna go back to the councilwoman for a minute to, to just summarize it again, what the question is, and now that the councilwoman's aware that there's kind of two different things we're talking about. And then I'm gonna ask you guys to take what the councilwoman asked for and, and get us something in, in writing that's, that's, that's simple, that, that we can digest in 30 seconds, and then bring that back to your hearing on, on, I think your June 4th, Friday at 6:00 PM. And any presentation at the beginning, just read that narrative answer to the councilwoman's question. But Councilwoman Ramos, can you just summarize it once more, so they're clear on what it is you're looking for?
Sure, and I, I appreciate, Mr. Chair, you entertaining this. What I'm trying to understand is exactly what numbers are we using to calculate funding, both at the state level, but also school by school. So Chris was actually getting to my question about how we're gonna end up fund, my other question, to get into how mu, how we are determining funding for the coming year if enrollment numbers were significantly down in this past, in this current school year that we're in. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Really appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, and we'll follow up with that specific answer. I will just say, in general, the enrollment did not go down as much in Baltimore City. It was, it was fairly flat. It went down a little bit. But individual schools, to your point, Councilwoman Ramos, did go down. And so, and then that's when we get into the process that Chris was talking about, about we work with schools, we do budget collaborative process, where we work with schools to make sure that they can, you know, that they can balance our budgets in a way that's meeting the needs of students.
Councilwoman Ramos, you good?
Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Thank you both.
Outstanding. Okay, so we did Porter already, correct? Porter, you're good. Ramos is good. Councilman Bullock, did we do you yet?
No questions here, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCray, I think we did you?
We did. No questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Burnett?
No questions. And sorry, I'm having some connection issues. I have to go off cameras. I could hear the hearing.
No, no worries. Thank you, sir. Councilman Conway? Okay, I'm pretty sure we did. Dorsey, you're good, correct?
Yeah, after this hearing, I just had one question on my mind before we recess or adjourn, I guess, before we adjourn the committee.
Yes, sir. We did. Schleifer, Councilman Schleifer, you're good?
Good, yes, thank you.
CVP Middleton, you're good?
Yes, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Stokes?
No question.
Okay, perfect. Okay, and then Allison, if, if you and your team can just kind of put together a brief narrative to, to kind of simplify for us, and what would be helpful? Can you just include a slide in your slide deck that, that addresses just this one? Okay, thank you so much. That's perfect. And then, before we go into recess, Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just unrelated to this hearing.
Before you, before you go, Councilman, let's let the folks from the school system go, because I know they, they got a bunch. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Chris, Melissa, thank you.
Thank you.
Where's your source, sir?
So thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for the committee, say, having not been on the committee to hear the budget of last term, we have this schedule for all the budget hearings that goes up through Monday, the 7th, at 10:00 PM. Is the plan at present to vote the budget that night on the 7th? Or will there be another committee hearing to vote the budget on, say, the morning or early afternoon of the following day on the 8th, prior to the council meeting at 2 o'clock, or?
So, so things are gonna be, things are fluid right now. We've done different things in, in the past, even though you haven't been on the committee, you're, you're obviously privy to, to what we've done in the past. In some instances, we voted it out at the end of, of the week of what was programmed. In other instances, we've come back a week later or the following day. The hope is to be able to come to an agreement with the administration, as always, on, on what, you know, the final budget is going to look like. Right now, I, I think the hope is that we're able to vote this out of committee. You know, I can't speak to whether or not there are gonna be amendments in the form of cuts or supplementary appropriations, or, or what that will look like. But, but again, right now, the hope is that we'll be in a position to take a vote on Monday, June 7th, sometime on or around 10:00 PM. You'll be getting, committee members will be getting some guidance from myself in the president's office, and I, I think there's a, a good likelihood that we are gonna be asking committee members only, you being one of, one of the seven of us, Councilman Dorsey, to be physically present in City Hall on the evening of Monday, June 7th, even though you may not be physically in council chambers because of COVID protocols. But more guidance on that will be forthcoming, and I think reasonably you could expect to get that guidance by plus or minus Wednesday of next week. If you haven't received the guidance by then, if you could please nudge me on that offline, preferably, and, and I'll make sure that, that I confer with the president's office and, and, you know, we keep everyone on the committee updated.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Colleagues, any other questions? Process for, for next week or anything like that? Okay, we are going to go into recess. We'll see everyone this evening at 5:00 PM. I do have one ask. I know that we have a really long week coming up. Appreciate the fact that you all have been so invested in this process. I know that we have 60, six zero hours of hearings programmed for next week, so I certainly don't expect this, but I would like to ask that every council member have their video on tonight during City Council Taxpayers Night. I think it's very important, and I know that President Mosby feels the same way, that we are live and can demonstrate to, to the community, to our community, that we are listening to those concerns. We may not agree with all of those concerns, but I think it's important that we are attentive and, and that there's no question that we are paying diligent attention to what citizens are sharing with us in terms of feedback. So if you are having internet connection issues between now and then and the next hour, I would respectfully request, if at all humanly possible, please find a place where you have stable internet connection so we can have our cameras on for this evening. And with that, we're gonna go into recess, and the committee will reconvene at 5:00 PM sharp this evening. Thank you all very much.